We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, November 11th, meeting of the Evanston City Council. First item on the agenda is a public hearing for the fiscal year 2014, proposed budget for the city. Mr. Lyons, are you going to walk us through that, please?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Clerk Caldwell, members of council, City Manager Bobkowitz, Marty Lyons, Chief Financial Officer. Tonight we are doing the official public hearing for the 2014 budget process. The 2014 budget for 2014 as proposed is $252,295,571, and that includes all funds and inter-fund transfers. When inter-fund transfers are removed, the net budget is $220,517,313. The city has already begun its budget deliberations, as is our usual process. Our public hearing is in the middle. We do not have the public hearing at the end when the process is over, nor in the beginning when the process has just begun. That way residents that wish to speak regarding the budget do have information regarding our process to date and where we might be going. Information is available to all residents. At the clerk's office, a budget is on file. A budget is on file at the public library. And of course, we have all budget documentation, including the proposed budget. All budget memos to date are on the city's website at the budget folder, so at www.cityofevanston.org. I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the hearing.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? We don't have it on the agenda, but I'd like to have citizen comment for the budget at this point. We have one speaker. Mr. Rizki, would you like to address the truth in taxation and the hearing on the budget now?
We're just at the budget.
He could do both.
Okay, well, we need to open them.
All right.
Two different hearings.
We need to open them both, so you can only do one at the moment.
And then I'll do the other.
I'm sure you will.
Okay. If we're going to talk about the budget first, at the last meeting, I was corrected on a fact about fire station number two. As I stated, it was $360,000, basically is what you want to spend to do a kitchen upgrade. And that basically is a waste of taxpayer money. At this point, the council is either going to kill this, or it's going to carry it forward. But the total price of that project is $1.6 million. So if you start this, are we going to spend $1.6 million on a fire station and give them a new kitchen, which they clearly don't need? This is not a good use of taxpayer money, as I stated before. And frankly, this council, if this is part of the budget process, should consider killing this. You've already spent money on design. So remember, an alderman some years back stated, "We spent money on design for a project, therefore, we need to keep it continuing." And that was the interconnect project between Willmet and the city, and it died too. So this project is a huge waste of taxpayer money, and I think council members saw this with their own eyes. And I think anybody who goes there and sees the condition of that kitchen, it's perfectly fine. There's no reason to replace that kitchen or do that kind of spending at a fire station. So I think that needs to be killed. And there's some real confusion as to what you're approving, when you approve all this capital. Because clearly, some of these things, I showed you, but are you approving them tonight? When you approve, not tonight, but if you approve this budget. So I think that's basically what I have to say about the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Rizki. Does anyone else want to comment on the budget? Mr. Lyons, then, do we need to open the truth in taxation?
I would defer if we needed to close the other.
All right, could we have a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, the ayes have it. Now we'd like to open the truth in taxation hearing.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Tonight, we are also doing our truth in taxation hearing. Truth in taxation is a statute that is required if you're having a increase above a certain percent. The city has done, it's 5%. The city has done a truth in taxation hearing, regardless of the percentage increase each year. This evening, I would like to remind everyone, both in the audience, the council, that our proposed tax levy is like our proposed budget. We do a tax levy estimate that equals our proposed budget. Both are subject to change for the final reading of the tax levy and for the adoption of the budget resolution. So with that being said, I would like to repeat the tax levy as it was published, so that everyone has that specific information. I will be brief. And just make note that we budget our tax levy without the 2% loss factor, because we budget the amount of money we expect to get in, but we disclose the amount that will be levied, that is with the loss factor included. So tonight, I'm going to read the numbers that include a 2% loss factor, and so they will all be 2% higher than what you'd see in the general fund budget, or in the police pension budget, because that's the amount that is extended, not necessarily levied, to use county terminology. So with that being said, the corporate and special service tax extended for the city of Evanston for 2012 equaled $26,951,312. The proposed corporate and special tax to be levied and extended for 2013 is $26,811,010. This represents a 0.52% decrease over the previous year. The Evanston Public Library extended taxes for 2012 of $4,340,14. I have to make a correction in what we had advertised. The proposed Evanston Public Library tax to be levied and extended for 2013 was published to, say, $5,258,509. That was overstated by $153,000, because staff had included the library capital levy of $150,000 as both a separate fund, and the library had included it in the library fund levy. So we had it in both places. The net levy is $153,000 less with the 2% loss factor included. That represents approximately a 17% increase instead of the 21.16% increase that was published. The property tax extended for the city of Evanston debt service for 2012 equaled $12,038,795. The estimated property tax to be levied for debt service for 2013 equals $13,588,043. This represents a 12.87% increase over the previous year. The total property tax extended for the city of Evanston for all funds for 2012 equaled $43,330,121. And the estimated total property tax to be levied for 2013 was published at $45,657,563. And with the $153,000 removed from the library, that is a 5.02% increase. It was published as a 5.37% increase. And finally, the total property tax extended for the town of Evanston for general assistance and the town fund in 2012 equaled $1,181,375. The estimated property tax to be levied for 2013 equals the same amount, $1,181,375, representing a 0% increase. The total property tax extended for special service area number four of the city of Evanston for 2012 equaled $416,327. And the estimated property tax to be levied and extended for 2013 equals $377,551. This represents a 9.31% decrease over the previous year. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Marty, the library budget we received in our packet and was published on the city website had the correct library budget in it. Is that correct?
That is not correct. The one that was...
17%?
It had 17%. I will take a look. In the actual detailed pages, we do have a library corporate levy, a library capital fund that we created, and it had $150,000 showing as tax levy. I just did not want anyone to think that the library was levying $150,000 twice. And as a part of the budget process, that amount also may go away in any event. So whether it be once or twice, it also may be zero as a part of the council review of the total city's budget.
Before we get it to zero, I think I'd like to say that I support the library increase. We have underfunded the library for years, and I think it would be very wise for us to support the increase. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Mr. Lyons, why the different magnitude of loss factor for the township levy? Did you already mention that?
I did not mention that. That is a historical question that has been asked before. The logical reason for that is the township is solely dependent on the taxes, so they've had a higher loss factor in the event that they do not make their collections. That would have a direct impact on their ability to provide services that year. That would be the, on a year-to-year basis, that would be the response. When you look at the amount of fund reserve in the township funds at this point, that loss factor could be reduced in future years. It could be reduced in this year as well.
So we build in a 5.263% loss factor for the township levy, mostly for a historical cushion, budget cushion?
Yes.
More or less. And what would you feel comfortable, if we were to, would it in effect reduce the levy if we were to reduce the loss factor, right?
Yes, and I would be...
What would you be comfortable with?
I would be completely comfortable with the same loss factor as the city has.
Alderman Rainey?
It's a completely phony number, because when you pay your taxes, everybody pays the entire tax bill. They, it's just complete, I mean, I want to use a term that I was criticized for using before, but it has to do with a certain kind of economics, and this is just wrong. We cannot do it. We need to, we need to make a motion when it's appropriate. Truth in taxation, it is not. When you charge 5% plus loss factor for the township and not for the city, that is not truth in taxation. I know you're not doing, I know, I'm not pointing a finger at you, but the concept is not truthful. So we need to get over that immediately.
So I'm assuming that's something that we can pick up during the council meeting?
Yes, when we consider the budget.
Yes, we can make that amendment for the final reading.
All right, seeing no lights. I am assuming no one else wants to comment. Can we have a motion to, oh, I forgot, Mr. Rizki.
Ms. Esther.
All right, you are both more than welcome.
Well, every year I come to these truth in taxation things, and the problem is, what is really the tax increase? Because that's really what the taxpayer cares about. It's 5.3% is what we're hearing on our tax bills. So that's really the issue. It's not all these funds and fees and everything. And the other thing that I think the council is part of the tax here is the water bills are going up 10% again, and the sewer fees and the sanitation fees. Maybe not, I'm not sure about sanitation, but the, well, the sanitation, not the sewer, actually. But so all these things are going up. And as we all know, you transfer $3 million out of the water bill fund, and you put it right in the general fund, which would be a 7% property tax increase if it was taxed. So there's a lot going on here that's not, I wouldn't call it very truthful taxation. But I think the question is, is this 5.3% what we're going to see? Because I was told right before the meeting, there might be an infusion of money that might possibly change it. But I'd like to know more about that, and I'd like the council to elaborate with that as we get into the discussion. But I'm afraid that money might go somewhere else, and then we taxpayers will be stuck with a bigger bill. So I'd like to know more about that.
Thank you. Ms. Esther? Oh, there she is.
Good evening. Part of my question also goes to what Mr. Rizki was talking about. The number of 5.3, which is supposed to be the property tax for the general fund, the general paying, the general operating bill of the city. And the question is, and which was hard to see in this budget, what is the amount that is going to be in the capital improvement, that line that's going to appear on the property tax or help add up and makes the final property tax bill to the city for the people here in Evanston, the property? And also, in reference to the windfall that is supposed to come from billing permits and stuff, my question is, if you pass in this, and this has to be certified, to the assessors' office on June, on December the 31st, and if we do not have those bills in hand that said, "This is the confirmed amount, and this is going to happen. We don't have the check and everything." You have levied this 5.3%, and then come February the 1st, you get the money for these here permits. Then how is that levy, how, for the people? So do you go back? Is the law allowing you to go back to change the levy, to lower it down to the 1%? So, or is it carried over to the next year? This is something that I think we should know, that we can be looking forward maybe to the following year, 2015, to a Christmas present in our taxes. So that I would like to, it need to be discussed more. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else has signed up for the truth in taxation hearing, so I think we would entertain a motion to close the hearing. All in favor, say. Is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Rainey? Did you want to comment on that, or?
I just was wondering if Marty could give Ms. Esther the number, the debt service number that we're going to be levying the capital. What's the number? I've got my budget open right now, looking for it, but before we move on, I thought you might mention it.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. We do not have anything that is levied presently for the capital improvements fund, so we are not, that is not a...
The debt, the debt service fund.
For the debt, I had heard their reference, the capital improvement.
I know, I know that was the reference, but I believe the intent is the debt, debt service.
And as proposed, the debt service fund is changing from $12,038,795 to $13,588,043, and that is with the loss factor included. And I will provide that information to her, where we would have that number in the budget, in the debt service fund, and in the overall tax levy summary that we have on page 41 at the front of the budget as well.
And on page 21, the previous levies are here. So you can see the, I mean, I'm looking at the debt service on, in 2013, it was $12,568,104. So I just wish there was the next column that said 2014 proposed.
The 2013 is for, if it says 2013 levy, that is for the 2014 budget.
2014, okay, okay. That's what I'm looking at right here. You see? So it's on page 21. Sorry, I didn't get to it fast enough.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Are there any other questions, comments? It's been moved and seconded to close the hearing. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, the ayes have it.
That makes a huge difference.
Next on the agenda is the mayor's public announcements, and I am delighted to read one for Fred Schneider, the EEA board president. Volunteers have been the backbone of the Evanston Ecology Center since it was founded. Fred Schneider has dedicated his time and energy since 2005 to make Evanston a better place to live and play through the Ecology Center and its programs. Fred played an instrumental role in developing a roadmap to financial self-reliance for the Evanston Ecology Center. Over the years, he has served as board member and president of the Evanston Environmental Association, the EEA, which supports the Ecology Center. Fred served on the planning committee for the Evanston Green Ball, which is a fundraising event for the Ecology Center that is co-hosted by the EEA and the city of Evanston. He also served on the planning committee for the Evanston Green Living Festival, worked with Northwestern University to obtain the tiny house, and coordinated the yearly scenic film festival at the Ecology Center. Fred is an inspiration and a valued team member. Unfortunately, Fred is moving to California in the coming days and will be greatly missed. Thank you, Fred, for your many years of volunteer service to make Evanston a more green and environmentally sensitive community. This certificate is a small token of our appreciation for your dedication. Would Fred please come forward?
I just want to say a couple of quick things. Thank you. I'm obviously touched and honored by this. I don't know who started this, but thank you. A couple of quick things. One, I learned a lot about community and sustainability from all the years we've been in Evanston. And I have to say, this is not an easy place to leave, in any way whatsoever, even if it's going to San Francisco Bay. It still is not a great, really easy thing to do. I love this town. I love the Ecology Center. And I've been told by a lot of people that California and San Francisco is sort of the mecca of sustainability. And so I'll accept that, but I just want them to know that I'm leaving the nirvana of sustainability to leave, to go out there. So it's a great town. It's a great place to be. I really have a hard time leaving this place, but we're going to move on, and we'll do our best out there, and we'll never forget this place. The one thing I do urge all of you is just to please, please, consider staffing the Ecology Center appropriately. It really needs it. It's going to be a more, I think, an active hub in this community as the years go by, even more than it has been in the past. And it deserves that attention, so please consider that. The people there work extremely hard. My colleagues on the EEA and the Ecology Center, and in the Office of Sustainability here, Catherine, have taught me a lot about what it means to be in a green city. And I hope that we'll all continue to do what we need to do to make this town what we want it to be, which is one of the greenest cities in America. So thank you very much. I appreciate that. So thank you very much, I appreciate that.
My only other announcement is that Veterans Day, in the rain, in the cold, was very well attended, and I was tremendously proud of this community, and thank everyone who showed up in spite of the rain and cold and for the ceremony. City manager, do you have public announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I have two. First of all, wearing my hat as your acting township supervisor, I'm happy to announce that there will be a township open house on Thursday, November 21st, from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. here at the Civic Center to show off the township's new offices, so we encourage everyone to attend. Next, I'd like to introduce Carolyn DeLutry, the executive director of Downtown Evanston, who would like to fill everyone in on an upcoming event.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. It gives me great pleasure to be here tonight and to invite all of you and the entire community to get ready for the Second Annual Holiday Bash and Tree Lighting Ceremony in Downtown Evanston on Friday, November 22nd, from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. Business owners and restaurant owners in Downtown Evanston have been working diligently to make the evening as festive as possible, and we are celebrating the opening of Davis Street and all the new streetscape, which we're delighted to welcome in with the holiday season. We are kicking off the event, starting at 4:00 p.m. with activities throughout the downtown for our youth, and there will be a listing of those activities on our website at downtownevanston.org. And also, this year, we've enhanced our musical offerings, and we have the St. Nick's Latino Folkloric Dance Troupe that'll be performing after the tree lighting on Church Street. We also have the Music Institute of Chicago in numerous locations in the downtown. We have the Evanston Teen Choir, the Northwestern Dance Marathon, and also this year, featuring at the tree lighting will be the Second Baptist Church Choir. So that is a new addition to our offerings this year. Starting at 5:30, we'll convene at Fountain Square, and we'll wait the arrival, listen to music provided by the Second Baptist Church Choir, and wait for the arrival of Santa and Mrs. Claus at Fountain Square. After the tree lighting, we've got different areas, again, we'll have maps that we'll be handing out that night. Santa will be stationed by Bennison's Bakery, and they'll have hot chocolate and Santa, and we'll have a nice tent there for the kids to come and see Santa. And Mrs. Claus will be positioned at Bravo Cucina Italiano Church and Maple in her sleigh, waiting for young ones. So we invite all of you to attend, and hope to see you on Friday, November 22nd. Thank you.
That concludes my announcements.
Thank you. City clerk, do you have communications for us?
No communication tonight.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is citizen comment. I'm going to call the first four names, and please come up and give your name and address, and you each have three minutes. Katie Stalkup, Nancy Travers, Betty S., no, Nancy Traver, and Junad Ryski and Peggy Tar. All right, Katie is not here anymore. Is Nancy here? Yes.
Thank you. I, my name is Nancy Traver. I live at 2617 Thayer Street in the sixth ward. So I heard from a friend that the public libraries are part of the budget that's being discussed tonight, so I wanted to add my comments, because I'm a big library supporter. I go to the library regularly, twice a week, and I know that Evanston's libraries are funded at a lower level than other area libraries. So I wanted to come here tonight and just talk about what I see at the libraries, because I think the libraries are much bigger than just my own personal use. I went to the library yesterday, and I found people there of all ages and races. And while I was there, I watched a high school student get help for his paper on nuclear energy. Another patron was trying to create a resume, so he went to the desk, and he told a librarian he didn't have a computer at home, and he had no internet service, because he lost his job in the recession. And I saw the library help him a great deal. Two ETH students were meeting with an ACT tutor, and at the library entrance, I saw a sign about getting help with Obamacare. So I'm sure you were all aware, but there's been a person at the main library from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. today to help people sign up for the National Healthcare Program, which I think is just a great thing for the library to do. And right now, the library is showing a film about Argentina as part of the library's International Film Festival. So this long preamble is just a way of my saying that there's so much going on at the library, and it's so much more than what the library used to be when my mom was a librarian and used to check out books. So anyway, according to the Federal Census, Evanston's Latino population increased by nearly 48% from 2000 to 2010. To help that growing population, the library has added a Hispanic outreach coordinator, who is working with the Illinois Coalition for Immigrant and Refugee Rights and Casa Mexico, USA. And the former has brought numerous services, including a citizenship application workshop and informational campaign on the new temporary visitor's driver's license. The latter has brought services relevant to the community, such as civil documentation retrieval from Mexico, and educational programs such as the elementary Spanish science, sorry, the Spanish Elementary Science Education Program. And the transnational partnership with the Mexican Ministry of Tourism and Culture has opened opportunities to many new Hispanic residents in Evanston. So I was also happy to see that the library has added more services at the Robert Crown Center in conjunction with after-school programs. And I know the library is helping people start new businesses by offering free services and databases, free space, computer training, and business planning skills. And I know that this weekend, there's a free seminar at the North Branch about Microsoft Excel. I know that the library is ingrained in the community through Head Start and kindergarten classrooms, so I'm really proud of everything the library is doing. One library service I find particularly crucial is outreach to young adults. I'm a member of the Board of Directors at the Youth Job Center, which helps teens and young adults 14 to 25 find jobs. And I know that in the current knowledge economy, young workers have to be well-informed, educated, and computer literate, and the library helps with this. Teens and young adults can get excited about reading and improve their computer skills, as well as prepare a resume. There's one other way the library is so important for this age-
Nancy, I do need you to wrap up in a-
Group. So one of the wonderful aspects of our libraries is that they are free to users. You don't need a membership card to enter, you don't have to buy a ticket when you walk in the door. Of course, the library is not entirely free. We support the library with our property taxes, and if you're like me, with your overdue book fines. But I'm happy to support the library, and I hope the city council will continue to do so. The libraries in Evanston are so much more than just the shelves of books. Thank you.
Thank you.
Going to speak to a non-agenda topic, and that was, as I've spoken a few times now already, that is the water tank, reservoir tank at Northwestern University. A consultant prepared a report on this, CTL, which is a reputable consultant, that it stated in that report that the city was only to replace the top of that tank for $4 million. Somehow, city staff is recommending replacing the entire tank for $26 million. City officials have suggested Northwestern would like the tank moved to accommodate its expansion plans. If Northwestern wants the tank moved, I suggest the city council let them pay the $26 million to move the tank. There are some of you that may not understand the implications of this is put to the taxpayers. To move that tank will be a 20% increase in our water bills. Also, on top of the 30% increases we've had, or if we decide to borrow the money with bonds, it'll be a $1.8 million addition to the budget, which will translate into a 4% property tax for 20 to 30 years. This is not a small amount of money for something that really does not need done. At the seventh ward meeting, it was suggested there was an additional study on this, which I have not seen, which I don't know that it exists or not. Apparently, there's a study that Northwestern wants, but it's really about loading of the tank. It has nothing to do with replacing the tank. It's my understanding, at least reading the city documents, it says, it wants to do a study on the condition of the tank, but I was told Northwestern wants to load the tank more, and that's at least what I've been told by staff. Someone can correct me if they know more. So that's really something different. But as I see this, the taxpayers cannot afford this. This is a, I feel some public officials here are playing politics with millions of taxpayer dollars, and really, those capital dollars are precious, as some of you, I hope, should understand, given the condition of the water pipe in this town, where as we know, there's over, there's probably between 50 and 100 miles of 100-year-old pipe that needs replaced. And that's really where the money needs to go. It doesn't need to go moving a tank unnecessarily. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Peggy Tar, Carolyn Murray, and Mrs. Hakim, and Juanita Rosa.
I go by Peggy Tar. My official name is Margaret, just don't call me that, please. I wanted to touch on just a few issues. Today, I spoke to City of Evanston Senior Services Manager Christina Ferraro about the Chicago Avenue Jewel Store moving the bench, used by seniors at all, to wait for cabs, buses, and other rides from a protected area to a location in which seniors will be exposed to the elements. Hopefully, she and you, Alderman Wen, can convince Jewel Management to move the bench back to the protected area, where it was located for years prior to new Jewel ownership and management. My second issue, which I've come before you before previously, several residents, including me, as well as others, feel that the city does not care that the stationary bike studio Revolution Spin, located at 904 Sherman Avenue, continues to disturb others with noise. The neighborhood near Revolution Spin is made up of college students, senior citizens, blacks, Latinos, foreigners, low-income, and mentally fragile populations. But even non-residents have inquired about the source of the noise that can be heard from Revolution Spin. At its February 19th, 2013 meeting, the Evanston Zoning Board of Appeal approved operation of a boxing studio at 739 Main Street, with certain stipulations about mitigating noise. The boxing studio, located a couple of storefronts from Sherman Avenue, is owned by a Latino gentleman. The question, does the city determine what noise level is to be tolerated based on the ethnicity of the owner? I and others have to wonder, because the owner of Revolution Spin, who is white, and the city does not appear to have done anything yet to make Revolution Spin mitigate noise. The music and commands from instructors at Revolution Spin can be heard as far away as the Main Street parking lot, which is located across Sherman Avenue and past apartment buildings. The noise can also be heard north of Revolution Spin on Sherman Avenue and south across Main Street. In spite of complaints to my Alderman, Don Wilson, and the city, the noise from Revolution Spin continues. Ironically, the Daily Northwestern News Newspaper reported on October 1st that the Northwestern Shuttle stop was changed in response to residents in the Sherman noise area complaining about noise from the shuttle. Thanks for info, Daily Northwestern. I dare say that the shuttle, while emitting some noise, does not approach the level of noise or length of time the noise is emitted in comparison to that of Revolution Spin. In addition, the shuttle does not run on weekends. It seems that neither the management company nor the owners of Revolution Spin have invested in stopping noise from going outside. An Evanston police officer commented on the fact that Revolution Spin only has regular glass in its storefront windows. Months and months ago, Alderman Wilson said he spoke to Revolution, excuse me, Spin staff, and suggested that Revolution Spin install a material that musicians use to block out sound. Revolution Spin continues to disturb residents and others with loud yelling and music for hours, seven days a week, with classes starting at 8:00 a.m. on Saturdays and Sundays. To make matters worse, Revolution Spin sometimes opens this door during classes, and I brought a picture to show you, this is only one of several, that it actually opens the door. I'm not sure why they open the door, but at any rate. I beg that something is done about the noise from Revolution Spin. Some of my neighbors say they won't waste their time complaining to the city, because they don't believe the city will do anything. I'm trying to be optimistic, but also pragmatic. I'll continue to tape the noise from Revolution Spin coming into my apartment. The third thing I wanted to just touch on was the denial of the Jewish school to open in the-
I do need you to wrap up.
Okay. Denial of the Jewish school to open in the east half of the former Schur brothers' property. It seems anti-Semitic, and I know that can be argued, but I've been here when the Hillel House was given a problem by the city. I won't read what the traffic guy says entirely, but it said that the city spent $800,000 in legal fees to keep the school out. I think that's scandalous. But it seems as though Montessori High School is going to be permitted downtown on busy Davis Street. I want to thank, excuse me, thank again the traffic guy and Evanston Roundtable. And also, although I didn't quote the Evanston Review, I thank it too for information.
Thank you. Next is Carolyn Murray.
It'll be a year, November 29th, that Justin's murder had taken place here in Evanston. And as we know, that Justin's murder is not uncommon to this community. Last year, when I began to call and to play some of the unsolved homicides that had taken place in Evanston, at that time, it was 32. Now we're looking at approximately 36 homicides in Evanston that are unsolved. I was called to a meeting with the chief to what I perceived to be plans for trying to get another gun buyback in our community. However, at the beginning of the meeting, I was advised that, based on interviews, and the careful terminology, police terminology he used was interviews, that concluded that they wanted to name a young man that was found dead in Chicago, the Ross boy. So I was a little thrown back, because if this is, this is based on the interviews, no charges to move forward, no, no concrete evidence, because he used the terminology interviews, not eyewitnesses. From all of the information that was told to me, and readily by the police, by family members, residents, we know that there was at least three people on the scene of that crime. So for the police to infer that they would clear or close an investigation based on interviews, knowing that there were at least three gunmen present. Under the state of Illinois, if there is someone present during a murder, they are as guilty for murder as the shooter. I find it very ironic that now, all of a sudden, we want to blame this Ross boy for a murder, and he was never arrested. I find it very ironic that I, too, was put in that situation, where I had to fight for the reputation for my son, because the police wanted to report him as a gang member or Family Feud. So what type of insensitivity could you show the mother of this young man if you want to conclude or say these things about him without any formal charges? I've yet to receive that letter, and that's why I'm here. Let me be very clear about the phases that I've seen during the course of this year and the media reporting from the police. The first phase is the need to explain, or to make an excuse, on why a murder has happened in Evanston. Then shortly after, the accusations are put out there, if the family defends those accusations or not, then we'll go to lies. And I've made several points to other family members about sticking up for themselves and sticking up for their victims, because there should not be any reporting of untruths by the police. I've been approached by my neighbors that have told me that- I've been approached by my neighbors that have told me that my son was probably in a gang because he had baggy clothes, and that's what the police said. I buried my son. I should not have to defend his reputation. Because of all the work that I've done in this community to say that my son was a gangbanger, then what was I when I was planning gun buybacks? What was I when I was planning meetings for the families to come forward in good faith to talk to the chief? And he took names, and he took information, and he reassured those families that he would communicate with those families ongoingly as it pertains to their investigations for their unsolved homicides as well. However-
Ms. Murray, I do need you to wrap up. I'm sorry.
I can wrap up, but I can't wrap up my story. My story still continues on. It still continues on. This city has been voted the most livable? Most livable for what, until you die? This is not right, what you do to these families. This is not right to allow the police to conduct these investigations and pretty much tell me, "Close it." So what I'm here for, I'm asking for you to turn over that report, turn over that investigation, so I can hire a private investigator to properly, properly get some conclusive evidence and information to make an arrest. Not for one person that's dead that can conveniently have done everything that ever happened in Evanston. Now he's dead, he can't defend himself. That's not fair. And now, also, I just want to say that during the course of this, I have been in contact with the FBI, the ATF, Crime Stoppers, as well as the U.S. State's Attorney. I was also told that by him, "Oh, well, you know, we've been trying to get formal charges and federal charges against the two men that were outside my mother's house with the assault weapons." Well, when I contacted the feds in regards to getting federal charges, I was told that no one had contacted them. And if I was so interested in making sure federal charges be brought against two repeated felons, then why didn't the mayor or the chief of police contact them? I can go away, but my story's not going.
Thank you. Mrs. Hakim.
This is, I'm Mrs. Hakim. My two sons were murdered on, in July 38th in the store, Evanston Pipe and Tobacco. It was our family business. My two sons got murdered. And since then, I keep on asking the question to the police. They came to my house, they took everything from my house, my tax papers, O-11, O-10, O-12, and 416 Custer where I live, they used to be my tenants, they all filed, all the tenants filed, everything has been taken. And they are supposed to do the investigation about the homicide. But on November 6th, they came to my house again, the chief of police, and Joe Bush, the other one, couple of them, they came. And now they are turning it into the DNA test. They took our DNS test, and they said they wanted our DNA, an adoption. The homicide case is gone. I can't believe it. It's a hate and crime, and this is going on. I want the answer. What it is, first they said, "We have a camera, we have a clue," and everything. And now they said, "Nothing. No, no, we don't have nothing. We need the DNA from your daughter, from your husband, and from yourself." And they took our DNA test, DNA, and I don't know what they are going to do. And they're asking about adoption. We have no adoption, nothing. It's my biological children's, and that's all we have. My son, daughter has no, not my, the past two sons gone. And now, I don't know to whom we trust. How can we get help from the police when they don't do or serve the community or nothing? That's what, I want the answers from them. I want to focus on homicide, not on DNA, not on adoption, nothing. Thank you very much.
Deputy Chief Wasney is here, I believe, and I'm sure he would talk with you, a city manager.
Yes, sir.
Deputy Chief, maybe you'd like to go out in the other room. Next is Juanita Rosa.
I am Juanita Ross, 2320 Greenwood Street. Blake Ross was my grandson. Blake was killed in Chicago, and the only way they could identify him, they had to fingerprint him. And the police came from Chicago to tell me that my grandson had been killed. It took Evanston Police five hours to make it to my house to tell me. I have called them, tried to get information on who might have killed Blake or what happened. I have not been able to get any information at all. But two weeks before Blake was murdered, he had been shot at Fleetwood Jordan, and the bullet missed my great-grandson, who was 13 years old. My granddaughter went down and identified the person who shot at Blake. But because my great-grandson didn't see who shot, who shot the gun, that, that they couldn't do anything during the time that the Murray boy got killed. They have had Blake down at the police station. They questioned him, they let him go. I have a grand, another grandson who had went to Beverlydale, Illinois, and he happened to have his identification and some of Blake's papers in his pocket. They said that Blake had outstanding a warrant for his arrest up in, up in Waukegan because he didn't show up for court. But what I would like to know, if Boone County could found out that they had, that he had a warrant, why didn't Evanston, when they was picking him up and questioning him? That should have came up with them, too.
I'm sorry, I don't know, but we'll try to find out and get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of October 21 is requested. Administration and Public Works Committee met tonight, and we ask your approval of the city payroll through October 20, the amount of $2,716,843. The city bills through November 12, $4,405,638. Credit card activity through September 30th, $134,448. Committee asks your approval to authorize the manager to execute an agreement with our existing vendor, Acela, for an update and optimization of the city's automation software system, PAL, which is permits and licensing, in the not-to-exceed amount of $57,152.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Apparently, they're having difficulty hearing you outside the room.
How about now? I'll try. I'm not going to start over. I'll continue.
Thanks.
A32, approval of a contract extension for automotive oils, antifreeze, and lubricants. This is a one-year extension with Palatine Oil Company in the amount of $60,000. The committee asks your approval to authorize the manager to execute various contracts for snow towing services in the amount not to exceed $75,000. We ask your approval for introduction of, and the Transportation and Parking Committee concur, to recommend that the city council adopt Ordinance 1013, which amends the city code subsection 1122A, to specifically provide for the imposition of costs and attorney's fees incurred in the course of collecting parking fines left unpaid for more than 35 days. We ask your approval for introduction of Ordinance 124013, which amends 346M of the city code to increase the number of authorized Class M liquor licenses to one, and therefore permit issuance to Ingrape Company LLC, doing business as Ingrape Company, at 828 Davis Street. Madam Mayor and council members, the following are three ordinances that all have to do with expanding the geography of the TIF at Howard and Hartree. The first, Ordinance 120013, amends tax increment redevelopment plan and redevelopment project for the Howard-Hartree redevelopment project. Ordinance 121013, designating the first amendment to the Howard-Hartree redevelopment project area. And Ordinance 122013, confirming tax increment allocation financing for the first amendment to the Howard-Hartree redevelopment project area. Madam Mayor and members of the council, I also like to move suspension of the rules on Ordinance 120013, on Ordinance 121013, and 122013. The committee chair will address the action item. The committee requests introduction of tax levy, Ordinance 127013, which levies the annual property tax for general fund operations, municipal retirement fund, and the police and fire pension funds. We ask introduction of tax levy, Ordinance 128013, which levies the annual property tax for special service district, for special service area number four. We ask your approval of introduction of tax levy, Ordinance 129013, which levies the annual property tax for the Evanston Public Library. We ask your approval also for introduction of tax levy, Ordinance 5TO13, which levies the annual property tax for the township of Evanston. Ordinance 119013 is for adoption, and it amends the city code subsection 346Y, Class Y liquor licenses, to permit limited sale of wine by the glass for Class Y licensees. Under Planning and Development, Planning and Development Committee met this evening and asks your approval, along with the Zoning Board of Appeals, to adopt Ordinance 125013, granting a special use permit for the establishment of a commercial indoor recreation facility, Orange Theory Fitness, at 2800 Central Street. That's for introduction, and the Alderman of the ward has asked for the suspension of the rules, and therefore, I also move suspension of the rules. Resolution 64R13 has been held in committee and will be addressed by the committee chair. Ordinance, let's see, the Plan Commission, city staff recommend amending the zoning ordinance to allow commercial parking lots as special uses in the B3 district with front yard and side yard landscape setbacks. Madam Mayor, I apologize for reading this because I'd like it removed from the consent agenda because I'd like to make an amendment to that.
All right.
Under Human Services, the Human Services Committee met, and the township supervisor recommend the city council approve township bills, payroll, and medical payments for the month of October 2013. Human Services Committee also approved October bills, which included the Sun Times Media bill of $17,640. The total approved and recommended for your approval is $152,550.87. Is H2 off or on the consent agenda?
It's on.
It's recommended that the city council, one, receive the report to direct the city manager to work with both the Evanston Art Center and the Illinois Department of Natural Resources' Coastal Management Program on plans for future use of the mansion. Refer back to the Human Services Committee for further review and recommendation. All right. Next, under Economic Development Committee, the committee met this month, and with staff's support, a recommendation to the council for fiscal year 2014 budget for downtown Evanston as follows. $370,000 from the Special Service District Number Four account for downtown operations and maintenance, $138,000 from Economic Development Fund's Economic Development Partnership contribution account for supplemental marketing and economic development activities, and $98,670 from Washington National TIF Increment Financing District's Other Improvements account. And that would be for contract, for maintenance contract. The Housing and Community Development Act Committee met, and they proposed the adoption of Resolution 61R13, which approves the proposed one-year action plan for 2014, an estimated 2014 Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership, and Emergency Solutions Grant program budgets totaling $1,829,000. Also, the Housing and Community Development Act Committee recommends approval of 62R13, which amends the 2009, 2011, and 2012 block grant programs, and authorizing the reallocation of $52,288 in unexpended funds to the city's 2014 program. Under Appointments, Madam Mayor has recommended the following. The ADA Advisory Board, Joan Hickman; Bill Logan, Representative Parks and Recreation Board; Richard Shore, Representative Plan Commission; Sharon Bowie, Representative of the Human Relations Commission; the Preservation Commission, Sally Reese and Hunt; and Kurt Vogel; Zoning Board of Appeals, Violetta Cullen; Alad Arboretum, Louise Taylor; Age-Friendly Evanston Task Force, Isdr Lucas, Representative from the Human Relations Commission. With that, Madam Mayor, I move the consent agenda.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to pass the consent agenda, seeing no lights for further comment. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Wen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Seven to zero.
Seven to nothing. The consent agenda is passed. Alderman Rainey, could we have Administration and Public Works?
Yes. Thank you, council, for moving introduction of the three ordinances having to do with the TIF. I'd like to move approval of Ordinance 120013. Could I ask the Corporation Council if I can move them as a group? Okay. Ordinance 120013, you've just heard about that. It's a tax increment redevelopment plan and redevelopment project for the Howard-Hartree redevelopment project area. That's one. Ordinance 121013 has to do with the area. Ordinance 122013 confirms tax increment allocation financing for the First Amendment for the Howard-Hartree redevelopment project area. I move approval.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to pass ordinances 120013, 121013, and 122013, seeing no lights for discussion. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Wen?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes, sorry, Wilson? Seven to zero.
Seven to nothing. The motion passes. Alderman Wen, could we have Planning and Development?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Item P2 has been held in committee. That's Resolution 64R13. Item P3, Ordinance 113013, amending the zoning ordinance to allow commercial parking lots as special uses in the B3 district, has been removed from the agenda by Alderman Rainey. I believe she wants to make a change.
I'll second.
I move approval.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the ordinance. Alderman Tendem?
Also, P1 is off the consent agenda.
Oh, yeah. Okay, let's deal with, you're correct, but let's deal with P3 first. Alderman Rainey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One of, this is absolutely- One of...this is absolutely a wonderful ordinance, and I support it wholeheartedly, except for one part of it. The parking lot, the Plan Commission is requiring that there be front yard and side yard landscape setbacks on any parking lot that is established in the B3 district. Unfortunately, there really are no side yard setbacks in this district unless, for example, a parking lot were on a corner, because all the adjacent buildings to all the lots are built to the lot line. So, for example, if we were to knock down a building that would be adjacent to another building, if you were to do side yard landscaping, there would be no room for a parking lot because these are narrow lots. So I am...you know, I don't want to eliminate it completely in case maybe five buildings are not down, and then there will be place for side yard park...side yard landscaping. So I would like to say, front yard landscaping, definitely, and side yard where possible, just to amend it that way.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion. That's an amendment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend Ordinance 113013. Alderman Grover?
If we can look specifically to that page in the packet, I think it's 381, so it would be in section 6-9-4-7, and you would be removing the landscape setback in A or B?
For side yard.
For side yard, which would be 9...6-9-4-7-B, which refers to side yard when a budding street. You would be removing that one new sentence, am I right?
Yep. Yes.
That's correct. All right.
All right. Seeing no lights for further discussion. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Seven to zero.
Seven to nothing, the motion passes, and now we're on P1.
Madam Mayor, I neglected this. This was already introduced, and I move that we suspend the rules.
I think the rules are suspended.
All right. And I move approval.
Good. It's been moved and seconded to approve Ordinance 125013, granting a special use for commercial indoor recreation facility at 2800 Central. Seeing no lights for further discussion. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Seven to zero.
Seven to nothing, the motion passes.
Madam Mayor, I have one more point. With respect to item P2, that's the 708 church item, that has been held until the next PND meeting, which is on Monday, November 25th.
Thank you, Alderman Nguyen. Does that conclude your report?
Yes, that does.
All right. Then I believe everything else is good to go, and we are at call of the wards. Alderman Tendem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to announce that there will be a diabetes screening event at...held this coming Thursday. It's sponsored by Representative Laura Fine and me. It will be held this Thursday from 8:30 to 10:30 at Kurt's Cafe. Kurt's Cafe is at...just west of Lincolnwood at Central. So again, 8:30 to 10:30, Kurt's Cafe this Thursday, and just stop in for a screening. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a ward meeting last week, and I want to specifically thank Assistant Director of Health Carl Keneva, Assistant Director for Public Works, Homayam Peruz, City Manager Bob Kowits, my problem-solving officer Scott Singenberger, and Brandon Sullivan and Michael Connor from the Golf Association for their many contributions to that meeting, and I'm sorry if I've forgotten anyone.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank all the veterans in our country and to all the service personnel on Veterans Day. I want to speak to an issue that Peggy Tarr brought up. We did not keep out the Joan Dax School. Joan Dax applied for a change in zoning, which they were denied, and they sued us, and they lost. And I don't know what else we can say about that, but to imply in any way, shape, or form that there was any anti- ...is about as mean-spirited and wrong as you can get, and I am shocked at Peggy Tarr for what she said tonight. I want to shout out to BMO Harris. Call us! BMO Harris, we are trying to talk to you about a building in the 700 block of Howard Street, and you know it. We are calling you, and calling you, and calling you. And I'd like to say to the council and to the television audience that when you see some of these abandoned foreclosed properties, they are owned by a bank that refuses to move on them if they are in certain neighborhoods. I am accusing BMO Harris of...have you heard the term redline? They might not be redlining, but they don't give a damn about properties in South Evanston that they own. And I am asking them to call us. And I would...going to conduct a telephone campaign to get them to call us. So, having said that, I...it's just appalling when they own a building that somebody wants to pay for, and they won't give it up.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Burris?
I have not followed that. No reports.
A wise decision. Alderman Fisk?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Alderman Nguyen?
Yes, like Alderman Rainey, I would like to thank all of our veterans and the veterans' families today. I think there are many people who are here today who are members of that group, and it's important to recognize it. That's right.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Thank you. And Alderman Tendem, you've given one. All right. Alderman Wilson, do you have a motion for us?
I do. Pursuant to 5 Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel, collective bargaining, litigation, and minutes. These agenda items are permitted, subject to be considered in executive session, and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are 5ILCS 120/2A, C1, C2, C11, and C21.
Is there a second? Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.[1770.12]